Recording. Thank you. And before we get started, I must, I will call the meeting of the Free Town Planning Board to order. We do have a quorum present, myself, Jim Freitz and Chris Mello. And I believe, is Dave Cross with us too, the alternate?
No, it doesn't look like it.
Oh, okay. So I must read the governor's order. Hopefully this is the last time. So pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law in general. Law chapter 38, section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020, order imposing strict limitation on number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Free Town Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information in the general guidelines for remote, for remote participation by members of the public and our parties with a right and or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the Town of Free Town's website, free town MA dot gov. No one person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we aren't able to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on Free Town's website an audio or video recording transcript or a comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. Okay, so we, relatively shorter agenda comparatively speaking. I will make this statement for all that that are here tonight. We're, we're minus a couple of our senior members tonight. They had conflicts, so they could not attend our, our meetings tonight. So for those interested parties, we have public hearings. Typically what happens is we will allow the applicant to make their presentation. And then we open it up for questions from the general public and also from board members. So these public hearings, none of these things will be decided tonight. They go off a peer review, they, further scrutiny by the board. And again, oftentimes there's changes made in response to public comment and public input. So none of these things here will be solved tonight or acted on tonight. And in fairness to the other board members too, that would be a bit unfair. So we're not going to be doing any of that anyway. So that being said, first thing on our agenda, we have a discussion of locust acres subdivision change of surety. Again, this is not a public hearing. This is a previously approved subdivision plan for those folks, members. This was a plan that was approved many years ago. The plan had expired. There was a renewal, an application we voted on and we've approved. What this is about is discussion relative to the surety that we have right now. We have one of the lots under covenant, if I'm not mistaken. Do we have the applicant or their representative here tonight?
You got me, Fadi Hanaen.
Hey Fadi, how are you?
Good, good. How you doing guys?
Good, thanks. So it's my understanding that you've proposed a, is it a cash surety?
Yes, I want to put in some cash.
And Chris, you, you sent that email out to everybody with the, with the, with the estimate on it?
Uh, yes.
All right, which means I need to find it now. I know you, that's actually, yes, I know you sent it because. Good afternoon, draft minutes, is it in that one?
Uh, no, it's the one on Fri- from Friday.
From Friday, oh, well, I was out of state on Friday, so. For those folks that want to follow along on the board, you would have been sent an email with the cost estimate, the construction estimate for the proposed surety. So Fadi, if you'd like to make any kind of presentation, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, like I said, I'd like to pay the cash to the town till I finish the, to finish constructing the road. I guess that will make everybody's life easier. And if this is something good with the board, if they accept the plan, I guess we'll.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm. I'm trying to find where it was sent to us. Files can be found here, planning board, current applicant.
It's attached to the email. It should be.
Well, I don't see it, so what's this here?
I just forwarded to you again, Kevin.
Oh, you did, thank you. All right, let's see if I got it. What you sent to Kay Damaris at Free Town MA?
I did.
I haven't got it yet. All right, Fadi, the question, the question is this, oh, here it is, thank you. Appreciate it. There we go. Okay, done. What is this? Okay, I'm sorry. It's just the, this is the quote from M and S excavation?
Correct, yes.
Okay, all right, I have, I have the document now, I'm sorry, I was looking for something else. So Fadi, here, here's the deal. This is typically what happens and we, we get a construction estimate, which you provided us.
Yes.
You've provided us, I would say that I've seen more detailed construction estimates, let's put it that way, okay? That aside, typically what happens, Fadi, is we get that construction estimate and we add a contingency. Oftentimes it's up to 40%. And why we do that is we, when, let's just say everything goes sideways, right? You hit mega millions, you move to, down to Del Boca Vista, down there in Florida, and this never ever gets done. And it's, and it was halfway through. Then we would have recourse to go and finish the project. And oftentimes our costs are much higher and significant, you know, significantly higher than they oftentimes are to a developer who already has relationships and always doing it with their own company.
Yes.
So, um. Let me just try and read this more. It says, while in Sammy's lane, according to the design plan by SciTech and by Free Town Planning Department, yeah? Finish all the necessary improvements to make acceptable, but, okay. And so typ- typically, Fadi, and you know this, you're in the business, right? Typically, the, the the surety request is a bit more detailed because we want to make sure of the veracity, you know? And, and, and in years past, when they've been significant, we've oftentimes sent it out for peer review. And we go with their number, which I can tell you right now is oftentimes significantly higher than what, and what is proposed by the developer. And what we get back from EPG is a very detailed, you know, there's X amount of this that's going to be put down. We assign it this cost, there's X amount of man hours. You don't necessarily have to get into that much detail. But I think something a little bit more than just a rounded up sum of 38.5.
Yeah. Yeah, just everything on the plan. We, we figured we'll do everything according to the plan.
No, no, I, I understand that, Fadi. You've been upfront since the beginning, nobody's trying to give you a hard time. That's, and, and, and you haven't done this very often with us and we haven't done this very often with you. So this is, we're going to learn a little bit together here. So at the end of the day, I'm going to be honest with you, $40,000 seems very, very inexpensive, right? Seems like it's relatively low. So how do you, how do you convince me it's not? Is by you giving us some numbers relative to what, you know, you're, you're going to buy certain lengths of pipe or, or whatever, or covert work that's going to be done. You might assign some value to that. Just the volume of asphalt that's going to be required. Obviously, there's a cost to that, that's why I say that 38.5 seems a bit low. And so maybe, Fadi, if you get us a more detailed, you know, if they pull out asphalt costs, there's X amount of ton. This is what it costs per ton to install, bit, done, okay. There's the covert work, there's drainage work, there's some other things. It's not a lot, so it shouldn't be all that hard for them to at least pull out some of those. So we get a greater idea of, 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 you know, whether you, it can actually be accomplished for that price. And then again, keeping in mind that we typically would add on anywhere between 20 and 40%. So if it does come back at 40,000, we'd be looking to add, you know, at, at least a 20% on top of that.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's fine with me, that's fine with me. But now, you have, you suggest anybody like you feel comfortable with to get estimates from?
Well, Fadi, what, what we can do is, in fairness, you know, we're not, our positions don't allow us to make recommendations, right? It's just, it wouldn't be ethical for us. What we, what we can suggest is, and what we do typically and have been doing for, you know, last 20 years I've been involved with the town is we, we tell you to look at other similar applications that were made to the town. And within that you might find, and this goes for everything, you know, you might find engineers that were, have done some successful work in town. You may in fact find some, some contractors that have been successful in town. And, and that's as far as we can go as far as saying, hey.
I know, I know my guy can't do it for this price, but anyway, I will get, I'll get you.
No, no, I'm not, listen, I'm not saying they can't do it for that price. What I'm, what I'm saying is they just need to prove out, they just need to show us how they got to the 38.5. Somebody in that office had to do a little figuring and ciphering. Right? My, my good friend Jim, Jim Freitz here on the planning board, he's been an estimator for, for years. He, he doesn't just come up with a one whole price. He, and, and, and I think Chris, to a certain degree, I think does some of that. Chris, back, back, back me up a little bit, well, you don't have to if you don't want to, but I'm going to tap into your construction expertise, if you would, Chris Mello.
Every time we build a bid, God, Chris Mello's speaking, but every time we build a bid, there's a, there's a breakdown of, oh, you got the price. I went to the asphalt, like you were saying, the drainage, everything.
And in fairness, I think you, you're probably a bit familiar with, and again, I'm picking on our newest member, so I told you, we were shorthanded tonight, so. But this was the Sammy's Lane, you know, the subdivision plan. And, and I know there was not a, a lot of work there, there was some road widening, there was some improvement to culverts and this, clearly some asphalt work and grading and all the, because does, does 30, does, we'll call it 40,000, to me, it just seems a little light. I don't, I don't know, in your experience. I know, I'm not, I'm putting you on the spot, Chris, and I shouldn't do that, so.
Yeah, I haven't seen the, say, I haven't, definitely, I say on the lower side, doesn't seem like it's going that in depth. For the three lots, like I've been looking at and definitely, definitely seems like it's a good deal, so.
Okay, all right. So Fadi, I think you've heard, there's a concern of ours that it's a little bit low. And then on top of that, we would need a little bit of breakout, right? Or break, you know, so, I mean, if you wanted to contact the office this week, I think Chris would be able to just maybe give you some names of, of people and say developers that, that have applied with us and have successfully gotten the permit. This is all public information, we're not divulging anything that we shouldn't be. It's just it's the closest we can do to saying, hey, you know, these are the people that have had success in getting a permit and have had success doing the work in town, so. And we, and we can go from there. And if we get more information and we're, we can probably move forward with this at the next meeting, Fadi.
Okay, all right, I'll, I'll work on something.
All right, if you have any questions, Fadi, and you want to reach out to me, if you don't already have my phone number, you could certainly call the office and then I'll get back to you.
Yeah, I'll contact you through the email, like I've been doing.
Okay.
All right, we'll try to get something in details and then we'll take it from there. Now, can I?
Okay, thank you very much.
I want to, I want to finish the job. Now, if I suggest put in, just, just so you can feel better about it. If I come in like 50,000 and then add 40, 40% to it, so that will make it like 70,000? Would 70,000 make the board comfortable?
Well, Fadi, I, I, I think, I, I, I think from, from general conversation, not to speak for other board members, you hear that there's a little bit of a concern that, that the actual bid that you received might be a little light. It's, you know, to quote Chris, it seems like it's a good deal, right?
If I could jump in.
Please.
It's, it's not just say about the price that you give us, it's just knowing what's being done within the, the price that you are given.
That's a, that's a good point, Fadi. So when, when, when you get the, the, what do you call it? When you get the bid, it should call out what it is, right? You know, relative to the, the fill type, if you're bringing that in, the asphalt and, and, and that kind of stuff. You know, what you're using for the pipes, obviously you have to meet all the requirements, but we need to make sure. Sometimes that's lost in translation, Fadi, you know? We have developers come in or like yourself, with all the best intentions, you know? And then somebody out in the field decides to send somebody to the local store to buy a piece of pipe. So we like to just make sure that we're all on the same page and, and you need to make sure of that too. You don't want to go with a bid and realize that, that we're going to jam you up on the opposite end, on the other end, when we do our, our inspections and we say, hey, this isn't the stuff that you needed to be put in there. So it kind of protects everybody. So to answer your question, if they come back with a, with a relatively, with a more detailed and it's somewhere around that 40,000 to 50,000 range and, and you give us, yeah, yeah, absolutely, there would be a level of comfort. Now, if they come in and they say that the, the detail is a new estimate and it's 70,000, well, we talk then. But I, I, I think, yeah, in general, if you only have $50,000 worth of work, but you're going to give us $70,000 cash surety, yeah, typically the planning board has been in, in favor of that.
Okay, all right, I'll get a detailed estimate and then we'll take it from there.
Excellent, thank you very much, Fadi.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Yeah, have a great night. You too, yep. Okay, next on our agenda, I'm going to take care of some, just, this is number two, right? This is, I will call back to order, this is an application by CVE North America for the installation of a solar array located at 32 Middleborough Road. It's actually at the end of Claremont Way, but that, it, it also gives the assessors map 245. Lots 30.01 through 30.07. So I will call that public hearing back to order, just for if there's any interested parties here and board members. This is currently still under peer review. Correct me if I'm wrong, Chris. This is still under peer review and they've asked for a continuance to our next meeting.
That's correct.
Okay, and so now we have to decide on our next meeting date, that's, that's the next thing, correct?
Uh, I think it's June 15th, because.
June 15th.
We've already continued in multiple things.
I thought so, and that, and that's in person, correct?
Yes, at the.
Yes, we did.
Police station, community room.
Yep, just wanted to make sure. So I don't know if there are anybody here from the public for this. I probably should have said that before we started item number one, I apologize if you stuck around, but yeah, we won't be discussing this tonight. Like I said, it's still under peer review. So if there's nothing else to add.
I have a question, it's Kathy Rico. So is this a different solar farm than the one that's going between Chipaway and Chase?
Yes.
Okay, so that's going to come up at some point.
That is, that is, that is the next item on our agenda.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, sure. So is there any other discussion? Okay.
I have, I have, I have a question. Is there, there are maps?
Who's this, who's this, please?
This is Mary Ann McQuillan.
Hi, Mary Ann.
The maps of, of where this is. Exactly where this is off of Chipaway Road. And where are they, and where are they available?
Okay, hold, hold on, Mary, we're not, we're not talking about the Chipaway Road project. We're talking about a project on Middleborough Road. I will be opening up that public, I'll be opening up that public hearing next, okay?
Okay, yep.
Great, thank you. So, so if there's no other discussion specifically on the 32 Middleborough Road, then I'll entertain a motion to continue the public hearing for 32 Middleborough Road, CVE North America Inc., the applicant. To, we did six o'clock, right, Chris?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, so six o'clock, June 15th, at the community room at the Free Town Police Station. I need that motion.
I'll move.
I need a second, Chris, you, you and Jim are the only two that are here, bud. Did we lose Chris?
Looks like he's just muted.
Chris, you need to unmute.
Sorry, I missed that.
That's all right, Chris, I just, there's been a motion to continue the public hearing, Chris, to, for the CVE 32 Middleborough Road to June 15th, six o'clock at the community room at the Free Town Police Station. It's been made, I need a second.
A second.
Thank you. Motion being supported, there's no fair discussion. Roll call vote, Jim Freitz.
Aye.
Jim Freitz, aye. Chris Mello.
Aye.
Chris Mello, aye. Kevin Damaris, aye. Motion passes unanimously. Now, the public hearing, I will call the public hearing to order. The Town of Free Town Planning Board will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, June 1st, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. to act on the application of Just Solar LLC. The applicant has submitted a site plan review application and plan entitled Site Development Plan off Chipaway Road and dated October 23rd, 2020, proposing a large-scale solar photovoltaic facility located on approximately 17 acres of land, located on Assessors Map 247 Lot 5 and Assessors Map 252 Lot 1. I've called that public hearing to order. I will just briefly go over how the public hearing works. I know I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, I'll do it again. We typically allow the applicant to make a presentation. Chris, if you would, we have, Azu, is, is Azu here for this?
Uh, yes, he's here.
Yes, I am, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Azu, would you like the ability to do a screen share?
Absolutely.
Okay, so Chris, if you can set him up while I'm doing the rest of my spiel here. For those interested parties and members of the board, if you would like, you can access the, the plans that we are talking about either through your computer on Zoom or you can actually access them on our town's website, free town MA dot gov. Go to the homepage, click on Boards and Committees, and you're going to click on the Planning Board. And you will see on the right-hand side on the news and announcements, June 1st, 2021 Meeting Materials. If you click on that, um. Please use this link to access the material. So if, and then you click on the link and it brings up the current applications. So the one we are looking at are going to be entitled Off Chipaway Road Solar Site Plan Review. That gives you the applications, the drainage port and the drainage report, excuse me, and the actual solar plan. So again, we'll have the applicant make a presentation, we will open it up for general questions. Before you ask a question, if you just politely raise your hand or get my attention some way, and then please just state your name for the record. All the questions will be asked through the chair and the answers will be done accordingly. Are there any other questions before we get started? Okay, Azu, you have the floor, so to speak.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board and the public. Chris, am I able to share my file or are you, are you sharing?
Uh, you should be able to share your screen.
Okay.
Just a quick, just a quick note, the, the screen sharing is only viewable if you are using your computer or, or what have you for the Zoom call. If you are just looking at these plans on the town website, you will not, you will, you will not see what he's pointing out. With his cursor, you'll be able to see it, but just not with his cursor. All right, Azu, sorry.
Okay, Chipaway Road.
Yeah, and if you could get, so, so folks out there, if you could just give a general oversight of where this is located relative to Chipaway Road, I, that way folks will have a better understanding.
Okay, is that showing up now?
Uh, not yet.
Okay, I haven't really had to share a file.
Okay. It's going to be so much better when we get back to in-person meeting.
Amen to that, so I go to share.
Amen.
Uh, what was that?
So I go to share screen?
I, I believe so, I'm not, I've never actually done it myself.
Yeah, that's your end, we don't do that end.
Okay. Files. Give me one second, I think I might be able to pick it up now.
Appreciate everybody's patience with this.
Yeah.
You know, what's interesting, we've been doing this for almost a year now. And it's only been the last two meetings that we've had any kind of technical difficulties. That's God saying, it's time.
Okay, let me just go back to, give me one second.
No good, Azu?
Uh, the, I thought I gave a, put a, I went to the share file and I go to my downloads and that's not opening, it's not, so I'm not sure.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know how to do it, well, why don't we just do this? We can follow along on, on our computers if, if need be.
Yeah, but if just for the public to, Chairman, that's.
No, I, I can.
Azu, did you hit share screen on the bottom first?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, can I answer? Okay, am I, I'm able to help? You, you should, you need to have the file open on your desktop. And when you click the share file, the files that are on your desktop already open will show up as a list and you click on that. From that way, you can't go into your files and pull it out of the, at least in my experience, you can't go to your files and do it. You have to have it already open in your, on your desktop. If you try to open it, just regular open it in the computer and then, and then click the share screen and it should show a box with everything you have open on your computer and then you click it there.
Let me try that. That, that's a download.
I, we'll, we'll, we'll take any help we can get.
Amen. I just dropped plans, the, Just Solar. So I have that opened, but.
When you hit share screen, did another box pop up with a bunch of pictures?
Uh, I went to, yeah, so.
And click one of those that you wanted to share.
Right, I, you, uh, no, so when I did that, it went to, it went to Microsoft SharePoint, Dropbox, Microsoft One Drive, Google Drive. And it's not, uh, picking any of my regular files.
Well.
It's not even picking up my desktop. So.
Okay, this is, this is honest to God, in a year's time, this is the first. And I'm not, and I'm not laying blame anywhere. I'm, I'm actually amazed that, that, that we didn't have more problems over the course of time. Those that are here interested in this, do they, do you have the ability to pull up on the, on our website, a set of these plans?
Is Chris Silverneal's able to share with the town's website?
Uh, maybe.
Yeah, then I can just, I can just discuss it, sorry, it's just not working.
No, no. Maybe the.
Did that work?
Technical difficulty, I don't know.
Yeah, Jim, you're sharing.
I think, I just, I did, I think I just shared it, Azu, so tell me what page you want, tell me what page you want.
Oh, fantastic, you're a lifesaver, Jim. Oh, fantastic, you're a lifesaver, Jim. Thank you. Good one. Okay, so if you, if you op- uh, open that a little bit more so I can see the, so I wanna see, go like a sheet number five?
C five?
C five, yeah.
Yeah, for folks that are following at home, each sheet's gonna have a number in the lower left-hand, uh, excuse me, right-hand corner, uh, and he's referring to.
Can you still see it? Uh, we're just seeing your desktop right now.
All right, let me slide that back over there. Is that good?
Yep.
No, I have two screens, that's why.
Oh, okay, are you able to zoom in more? Okay, yeah, so let's start with that one. It, it's got our two sheets, uh, C four and C five, but basically, uh, the proposed project, if you look at the area that is uh hatched, almost in gray, that is where we're proposing the uh, uh, panels. And uh, it's, it's halfway down the middle of Chipaway Road, Chipaway Road uh to the south, and uh, Chase Road will be to the north. And uh, when, so Mr. Chairman, just a point of information, when it says seventeen acres, it is basically the area of the upland areas that we are working in. Uh, the, the site is a lot more than seventeen acres, but we are working within the entire, entire site. We are working within seventeen acres. And uh, basically, uh, those are gonna be, uh, for some of the people that have seen solar panels, these are gonna be supported by helical piles, basically a little post uh into the ground. And uh, because of the topography of the site, all the panels that we are proposing are gonna be almost like in a bowl. If you imagine a bowl putting everything in there, so that all your runoff uh will be contained within that area. Uh, we've done some soil testing, we did actually several thou- soil testing to confirm uh the uh natural uh resource conservations, national, National uh, um, NRCS, National Resource Conservation Service. Uh, it used to be part of what they called uh Soil Conservation Service, but it changed their name to Natural Resource Conservation Service of the U.S. Department of Agriculture, and uh they're mapped out across the country, uh, different types of soil, based on uh different soil groups. Uh, so if something is considered Soil Group A, that means it's a site with a lot of sand and gravel, that when you put water in it, it goes shoot, it goes right down. And then, uh, a D soil, D S in David, uh, will be the poorest draining soil, so that the wa- water, when, when you have runoff, it sits there. The beauty of these solar panels is that because they are not making direct contact with the ground, the natural ground cover stays the same, but obviously, uh, we will do some land clearing uh, within that, within the area of the proposed panels. Uh, but what is interesting with this project, no existing residential uh lots, addresses are gonna be within uh, uh, six hundred feet of the panels. Uh, so the panels are gonna be way in the middle of the property. Um, and the runoff will be contained on the property, and uh because we don't need uh very big road waste, we are actually uh gonna be using existing cap bats that we're gonna try to stabilize for construction vehicles. So the, the existing cap bats that are currently being used for the cranberry box, uh, this site is in the farm, uh, farm use, so it's actually a lot of our cranberry bogs and the ponds uh that serve those po- uh, uh cranberry bogs, but we're not citing, we're, we're not gonna be putting any panels in the cranberry box. These are the upland areas uh that are within the entire site. So it'll be totally away from any residential uses. Uh, the uh, included in the uh project, obviously, is what is called inverters. Those inverters capture the uh, basically will be what the device that converts the solar energy to electric energy of uh energy, and then that will be stored into transformers. None of those transformers is within five hundred feet of any uh residential uses. And so, uh, most of the noise will be from those uh transformers and inverters. Uh, they are quiet at nighttime because there are those, you don't have sun, sunlight during the night. During the day, uh, your typical electrical dryer will be louder than those of uh uh inverters and the uh, and the transformers. And uh, the maximum decibel noise is measured in decibels, dB. Uh, and uh, the maximum that you hear from this is sixty uh decibels. But as you migrate away from the panels, uh, from the inverters and the transformers, that noise level for every hundred feet that we go of the, of the uh inverters, then no- noise level drops uh by thirty. So by the time you get to uh, uh, four, five hundred feet, the noise level will be zero. Uh, uh, and uh, those panels, because they are inside uh the uh, uh, the property, uh, those will not be visible from uh Chipaway Road, and they will not be visible from uh Chase Road. And uh, that's the extent of my presentation on this. I have another one, uh, but I will entertain any comments or questions. And um, I believe there were, that's the extent of my presentation, and I'm sure uh, the board will be looking to uh have this reviewed by its independent peer review consultants. And also, because we are uh within the jurisdictional uh boundaries of wetlands resources, we've also filed a notice of intent with the Conservation Commission, and um, uh, that here will be uh coming up soon. And uh, and so they will, the Conservation Commission will also get a crack at it. Uh, but that's the extent of my uh presentation at this time, Mr. Chairman, and I'll then.
Thank you.
Don't contain any comments or questions.
Thank you, Azu. And so, uh, I'll just make a general statement for everybody out there. I, 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 I I was remiss, I didn't make it earlier, and what, and what Azu was alluding to. Uh, part of our public hearing process, part of the application process is the town of Freetown doesn't have a, a, a cadre of professional engineers uh to review these applications, so the law allows us to send them out for what's called peer review. Um, the town has employed uh Environmental Partners Group for many years now, uh, they do a, a, a very good job uh reviewing uh these things for the town. Uh, additionally, and what's important to note is that this is all done at the applicant's expense. So not only do they pay uh their own engineers to do this, uh, they also pay for our review engineers to look at it. Uh, and, and it will be reviewed, not only for the planning board side of things, but I'm confident that it will be reviewed, the wetland delineation, the stormwater management, uh, under the notice of intent filing with the co- with the Conservation Commission. And again, both boards utilize Environmental Partners Group so that there is a consistency uh to the review. Um, we don't have redundancy and expediency i- is always appreciated by all parties, so. Uh, Azu, eh, uh, another thing relative to the noise, uh, and it's, it's gonna become, I think, a general condition for continued operation, is that the, uh, is that the operation must meet the DEP standards for noise, uh, you know, uh, pollution, if you will, right? Uh, and that's, and that standard typically is ten decibels over ambient sound, right? Uh, and, and again, short of doing an entire sound uh, uh, study and, and all, we've conditioned it basically that at any point in time during the operation, uh, if it exceeds that, not only will you be subject to any and all fines from DEP and, and whatever you would need from them, or, or be subject to from them, but uh you'd also be subject to any kind of action from the, the local community in the town. Uh, so, uh, certainly appreciate the fact that where it's located. I think, uh, if you could, um, maybe we could look at sheet C three, and the reason why, I, I understand it's, it's, it's the entire parcel, and what I wanna do is give those folks, those, those abutters, those interested parties, a better idea of uh where exactly this is going to be located. And so, um, if we look at sheet three, you will see the entirety of the project, uh, the entire parcel was outlined in green. Um, and to your point, the red hashed areas are actually cranberry bogs that are going to, I guess, remain active, correct?
Yes, yes, sir.
Yep, and so, uh, in, in doing, and then the gray areas would be the proposed solar array locations.
That is correct.
Okay, um, I can tell you that from other applications and public hearings that there is always a distinct concern uh relative to stormwater quality and quantity, and ra- you know, all things related to stormwater management when it comes to particularly uh our cranberry growers here in town, so. Uh, and I understand that it's more than likely it's the applicant who owns the cranberries, uh, but the concern will, will also be reflected in the pla- by the planning board, so we just need to ensure, not saying you haven't already, uh, but ju- we just need to make sure that we're going to maintain a level of, of stormwater management and, and quality control so that we don't uh jeopardize uh the cranberry growers uh in their operations. And again, those are just two ge- just two general co- uh comments. Uh, so, I'll, I'll, I will open this up if there's anybody from the public that has any questions or comments. Again, just politely um, uh, state your name for the record and, and feel free to ask your questions. Okay. Uh, anybody, anybody from the board? Yeah, yes, go ahead.
So, this is Kathy Rego, and my concern is that the picture that the solar person was discussing is not the uh area that's gonna be close, most adjacent to the property owners on Chipaway Road. So he was talking about uplands, and it's gonna be, you know, in the center of wherever he was talking about, but when I'm looking at this picture on the map on C three, it seems that there's an area that is closest to Chipaway that, you know, is what I'm of course concerned about. That's not in the middle of the property, that is the one that's closest to our property lines. So, and the other question I guess I have, and you can address all this, is when we bought this house twenty-eight years ago, we were told that it was conservation land and wetlands back there. So now, all of a sudden, it's not conservation land or wetlands, and a solar farm can go up.
Okay, so if I may, uh, and that's a good point and a good question, Ms. Rego. But if I may add to the, uh, respond to that, Mr. Chairman. Uh, when people tell, when people tell you that is uh, uh, conservation land, uh, that is almost a misrepresentation or mischaracterization, because that is.
Yeah, Azu, Azu, and, and, and I, I know where you're going with this, and, and you're not wrong, um, that might be a little bit outside of the purview of what we're talking about here. At the end of the day, uh, the, the lot is zoned a- accordingly, and this is an allowed activity within that, within that zone. Uh, Ms. Rego, you would not be the first person that's come to whether it's Conservation or Planning Board, and has been told that their real estate agent has made some sort of promises or assurances that might not have been a hundred percent true. Uh, so, and, and we are only allowed to look at this application under the purview of uh the Planning Board rules and regulations, and then Conservation will be under the Wetlands Protection Act.
Okay, so this.
So. So that, um, no, 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 you, you, you made a very good point, which is why, uh, Jim, if you could, if you could pull up sheet C three so that everybody can see uh, that, Jim, uh, and that shows uh the entire parcel, which I, I think is, is and again, that's why I asked him to do that, because I, I pretty much understood that your concern probably wasn't the area that's located a half a mile away. It's probably the area that's located closer to. And so, and so, Azu, I would just ask, uh, I don't know if you have a sheet that shows this, but um, you're gonna be located, Ms. Rego, you are Catherine and Ronald, there's lot zero fifteen, correct? Yeah.
Yes.
Yep, yeah, on the plan there, okay. So, Azu, uh, what's the scale on this? This is, this is, just so you understand, everybody understands on this, because of the large parcel, when you look at the scale, one inch equals two hundred and fifty feet. So, what we've oftentimes asked, Azu, is that we would, if you don't already have it, a plan sheet that would show distances to, um, distances to the nearest property line, distances to the nearest house, uh, and a, a bit of a detail of the type of activity that may be proposed between, say, the property line and the actual uh, um, first solar arrays. And what do I mean by that? If there's gonna be any uh activity uh relative to a, an access road around it, you clearly are showing it on the plans, I get that, but we like to talk about it. If there's going to be tree clearing that is going to be taking place, uh, you know. Granted, you made the statement earlier that the nearest house is about six hundred feet away. I think a lot of us like to, I think a lot of us like to see that on the paper to show, uh, and that also gives, I think, uh, abutters uh more information uh relative to their concerns, so.
Absolutely, absolutely. I have, Mr. Chairman, uh, that's a very valid point, and I will not have any problem doing that.
Okay, so go ahead, Kathy, do you have anything else?
Yeah, I'm not sure if it's for this meeting, or if it's for the Conservation Commission tomorrow, committee, whatever you call it, but you know, my concern is how many trees they're gonna be cutting down, how close, how close to my property line is it gonna be? And is this a done deal already? Is there any recourse that abutters have to say, no, we don't want this?
Okay, there's a lot of loaded question.
It's already done, it's already done, and we just have to live with it.
Okay, so loaded, a lot of, a lot of questions there, and so from a quote loaded. So I'll, so I'll just answer honestly, okay. So, I, I, I just asked Azu to provide uh maybe more of a detail of, of exactly the activity that's happening behind your house. So to that point, I, it's re-clearing, it's happening directly up to my property line and all. It does not look that way, right? It, it doesn't look like there's any proposed ac- activity within several hundred feet of your property line, just looking at the plan, right? I'm just gonna say that in, in general. Um, so that can be asked during this public hearing, uh, and is probably more appropriate than under the Conservation. Conservation Commission, obviously, we're gonna be concerned about the activity within the buffer zone to the wetlands, uh, so to your point, tree clearing, land clearing, installation of appurtenances and, and things. Yes, there is a, there's a, obviously, that's the main concern of the Conservation Commission. Uh, lastly, your question relative, is this a done deal? What I will say is, this is an allowed use, as voted on by town meeting probably about ten years ago. Uh, we have very, we have quite a few of them located here within town. Uh, and not to get into too much history of it, but what happened about twenty years ago is the town did a wholesale change on zoning. And what they did was in a lot of times, in a lot of places, they took the general use zone and, and created a residential. And what that did was took a lot of large landowners' ability to utilize their, their property in different ways and really only allow for residential. And we saw a large boom in, in construction many years ago, and we saw that a lot of, they didn't have a choice. Uh, the governor, Governor Patrick, again, ten, twelve years ago maybe now, uh, we could not outlaw solar, we could not outlaw wind in town, you had to allow it. And, and at the time, the, the planning board saw it as a useful tool relative to smart development and growth within the, the town. And again, I'm speaking in, in, in generalities here about stuff that's happened over the last ten years, not specifically this, this project. Um, and so what they, we discovered is that, uh, it's a, it's a, it's a a net gain relative to tax dollars and impact on the local, uh, our local services and resources relative to um having houses with kids and roads that we need to take care of, police and fire resources, highway department, that kinda stuff. Uh, so, uh, to answer your very general question at the end, is this a done deal? No, this is site plan review. There is, uh, it's, it's an inferred approval, if you will, so long as uh, the applicant uh and the town can come up with reasonable accommodations so that the proposed project uh is not going to cause uh disturbances within the community. And that's how we look at all site plan reviews, uh, solar or whether it be commercial development. So this is something that's been going on for quite some time here in town. I know most people don't realize it until it comes closer to them. Uh, but, so in general, no, this isn't just a done deal. Uh, rest assured, the delineation will be reviewed, this will be peer reviewed to, to the nth degree. There will be thousands of dollars spent on. There will be thousands of dollars spent on peer review. We will look at this. And invariably there will be changes made to this plan, uh, in accordance to our peer review and in accordance to, uh, our, our own concerns. So I know it was kind of long winded Kathy and I apologize, but I think your question deserved a little bit more of an in-depth answer.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
And, uh, Mr. Chairman, just to, uh, add to the comment that you just made and, uh, if that would make, uh, Ms. Rego comfortable, at least know, uh, where we, how we've approached this project. Uh, to the extent, uh, that you were told, Ms. Rego, that it's conservation land, I will assure you this. The large, what that's a large swath of wetlands to the south of where we're proposing, we are simply not going into any wetlands area. So that 200 feet of wetlands will remain intact. And it's a very mature vegetated wetland, very thick, very, very thick. When we did the survey of this area, believe it or not, even with our GPS units, it took us three solid weeks of being able to survey that area and also collect all the wetlands flags. So you will still and continue to enjoy that, uh, wetlands buffer. And then in addition to that, we have a swath of upland area that we're not touching. So, um, this project, in fact, you will not be able to see from your property because of that, the extensive vegetation that we have. And we are not going to be allowed to go into the wetlands and start cutting those wetlands. Uh, so just, just so you're aware of that. So yes, you are on a butter because all the abutters have to be notified within a certain distance. Not a certain distance from the actual activity, development activity. But because you have bought the property and you are within, and either directly or you are within, uh, 300 feet of the property boundary. So that's green line that is shown on the plan. That's where the distance is measured in terms of a butter notification, not from the actual, uh, uh, proposed, uh, development activity. So you do hear quite a substantial, uh, distance between your, uh, between the property line and where the project is actually going to be taking place.
Okay Kathy, do you have anything else?
Oh yeah, I have a lot of things, but I guess that'll be it for now.
No, this is, dear, now's your, now's your opportunity. I mean, you're going to have plenty, you're going to have plenty more, but.
Right, I feel like my concerns are a lot of environmental concerns. So I feel like you're probably is better suited to discuss them tomorrow.
Okay. All right. No worries. I guess I'll be talking to you tomorrow night then.
Yeah, so I have also a question about, I know that these solar companies with their billions of dollars, they can put these farms wherever they want, but who benefits from the taxes that they pay to the town? And, because I know there's been a lot of solar farms going up in this community and my electric bill hasn't gone down and my tax bill hasn't gone down. So who is it that benefits from all this solar, solar power?
Well, I, I would, I would say, uh, again, very general questions, but, uh, we bring in, my understanding, last time I checked with the assessors office, was well over a million dollars a year in local taxes from the, um, from the solar farms that are located here in town. So what that does is it goes directly into the general coffers of the town. Uh, planning board doesn't spend the town's money. The townspeople spend the town's money at town meeting. Uh, so at the end of the day, I think, uh, again, I don't want to speak for selectmen, the finance committee and all, but if you look at, at say the, the police station project, right? I, I think it was close to a 12 million dollar overall project, but the town only had to go out and borrow $4 million because of how successful we have been in bringing in, uh, tax revenue, uh, to, to the town, uh, to help offset the borrowing cost. So I, I think your point is well made. Nobody gets a direct benefit. So people in the community are not getting free electricity from the solar arrays. That's no, that's not the direct benefit. Uh, but I will tell you, uh, that a million dollars or over a million dollars a year in taxes is a significant amount of money, uh, that's been, you know, utilized, uh, by the taxpayers and, and, and spent, uh, by the town.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, uh, anybody else have any other questions right now? Again, this is going to be sent out for peer. Yeah, yes, yes.
Mary Ann McQuillan.
Hi, Mary Ann, thank you.
My first, my first question is exactly where are the transformers on the map? I see the, the red line, which is obviously the power line, um, coming down to the south. Um, I see the property line. Where are the transformers?
Transformers are right in the middle of the, uh, project. So if you look at the gray area, the gray areas, the transformers are right there in this, in the middle because that's where it's most efficient.
It's those two black boxes.
Correct.
On, on the map. Okay.
Correct, correct.
All right.
Mary Ann, do you have any other questions?
Um, no, I, actually, what, um, Mrs. Rego brought up the, uh, the, the, uh, Conservation Commission meeting. Is, is this, is this project on that, uh, meeting as well?
Yes, tomorrow night.
Okay.
And that'd be a Zoom too and.
No, I can find it on, I can find it on the website.
Yeah, on the website, right on our agendas, you can find it there. All right.
All right. So that, um, there's still, still some things, like, to be dealt with here. Um, the, uh.
Sure. Yeah, this is, again, this is the first, this is the first half hour of presentation. So there are a lot of things that are going to be dealt with.
No, okay. No, that's what I wanted to know right now. And how far away, um, is the noise? Um, you know, can you be down to no noise, not being able to hear the noise from the transformer?
Uh, you definitely, one, 100%. I will stake, uh, my, uh, all my last inches on this. You will have.
Well, how about, how about this, Azu?
No, no, you're not. I'm, I'm asking you the question. I see the power line coming down along that cranberry bog and then going across the property line, the green line. I see that. Okay? How far is that from the transformer to the property line?
That, uh, the, uh, the red line there?
Yep.
Well, that's well over 700 feet.
You can't give me enough of that.
So the chairman had asked that we, he had asked that we give a, make up a sheet and show all the distances and that would be.
Guys, I'd like to keep the conversation to the chairperson, right? So we don't have this back and forth. So I was just about to state that Azu, in addition to showing how close the arrays are, if we could show how close the, uh, the, um, transformers or whatever would be causing any kind of noise, okay?
Yes, sir.
If we can show that. And, uh, additionally, I'm going to repeat that we have more recently adopted the DEP, Department of Environmental Protections, uh, Sound, uh, Management Best Practices and Condition, uh, Projects Accordingly, that, uh, it cannot be louder than 10 decibels at the property line over ambient noise. Okay, so if typically ambient noise is not going to be all that loud out there, I don't want to get into the details of how they do a sound study. It's over the course of, of days and different hours of the day and all. But at the end of the day, that the project is going to have to meet that requirement that they cannot be louder than the 10 decibels at the property line of the project.
Oh yeah, that, uh, we, uh, that is something that we'll be glad to, uh, demonstrate. Uh, we wouldn't have zero of a problem meeting that, meeting exceeding that.
Yeah, there, there, they, these, there are standard concerns, right? Uh, we're going to be looking at, you know, hours of, of, of actual construction. What is the entrance and egress look like? Typically, we have that reviewed, uh, to see if it, for suitability relative to its intended use. So, uh, I can tell you, these are not one, two, one or two meeting projects. These things typically take weeks and months. I know the applicant hates it when we say things like that, but at the end of the day, rest assured that, uh, any concern, uh, we are going to allow you to express your concerns and allow the applicant to address them. Uh, keeping in mind, that doesn't mean that you're always going to get the answer you, you want. And it's the planning board's job at the end of the day to weigh all the information and to make a decision. Uh.
Rob's question always is every, every meeting is always lay down, lay down areas. Um, construction traffic, um, things like that. So where are you going to be bringing the panels in, laying them out for, uh, you know, assembly and stuff? So that's always a question that's always asked.
That's a, that's a good point. And Azu, um, you, 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 you're probably going to need to show that and, you know, Jim brought it up before peer review was going to bring it up. Uh, is that we've often, uh, had a concern relative to deliveries coming, you know, again, hours. Uh, but more importantly, uh, having the construction activity not taking place at the road and having it take place, uh, closest to, uh, the actual construction site and with minimal impact. I think, uh, there's a little bit of, uh, uh, of a benefit that there's an existing woods road that to some degrees already supports some sort of activity relative, I think, to the cranberry bog operation and such. Uh, so, um, i- i- it's going to need to be demonstrated that you can get vehicles off, they can pass and, you know, each other, uh, should, should there need arise, you know? If there's an issue, you don't want to have a situation where there's two vehicles that just can't pass, right? So that kind of stuff needs to be demonstrated too.
Yes. Look, we will be able to do that because that is actually part of the benefits of this particular project in terms of access and in terms of the actual development area. Again, there were the existing cranberry bogs will remain in place. And so, and so that's sort of what governs, uh, governs how, uh, how much activity. If you look at, if you will, uh, hold that in the middle there, see the existing car pad between the two gray areas. You have that as big swath of red crosshatch. Uh, that's all existing cranberry bogs that will still remain intact. Those are not going to be. Yeah.
Okay. Um, if we don't have any other comments, we, uh, we will continue this public hearing uh, to June 15th. Uh, just a point of note, uh, those of you that may have received a butter's, uh, notifications, you will not receive that for every meeting date and every continuance. So, uh, we encourage folks to keep an eye on the, uh, agendas. Additionally, uh, I encourage people, if they want to, day of meeting, give us a call at the planning office and ask because oftentimes a peer review may not be done in time and so, which it means we will not be, uh, the applicant won't be coming to the meeting. And so rather than carving out a couple hours in the evening, uh, if, if you can find out ahead of time, then you can go out and enjoy yourself, get you some dinner rather than having to listen to me. Uh, so that being said, uh, I will entertain a motion to continue the public hearing for the, uh, site plan review for Just Solar LLC to be located, uh, off of Chipaway Road to June 15th, 6 o'clock at the, uh, Freetown Community Room, Freetown Police Station.
Uh, so moved.
Second, I need to thank you. Motion's been made, it's reported. Uh, if there's no further discussion, uh, roll call vote. Jim Frey's.
Aye.
Jim Frey's aye. Chris Mello.
Aye.
Chris Mello, aye. Kevin Demaris, aye. Motion passes unanimously. So we'll see you folks again. If not tomorrow, we'll see you again on the 15th. Okay, next on our agenda, we have, um, a public hearing that I will call to order. This is the Town of Freetown Planning Board. We'll conduct the public hearing.
I have one, I have one question to you. So that the next meeting on the 15th is going to be an in-person meeting, not, not a Zoom meeting. Okay.
That's correct. It, it's at the actual police station. Okay, item number four, again, I will call, uh, public hearing to order. Town Freetown Planning Board will conduct the public hearing on Tuesday, June 1st, 2021, 6:00 PM to act on an application to TGA Clean Energy LLC. The applicant has submitted a site plan review application and plan entitled Site Development Plan 67 Chase Road dated October 23rd, 2020, proposing a large-scale solar photovoltaic facility located on approximately 19 acres of land located on Assessor's Map 241 Lot 36. And again, called that public hearing to order. This is, uh, just the same as the last one. This is a public hearing. We allow the applicant to make a presentation. After that, we open up questions, comments, uh, from the general public and from the planning board. This again will be sent out for peer review. Uh, you can follow along on the town's website, uh, freetownma.gov. Uh, planning board, uh, boards and committees, you go to the planning board. On the right-hand side, you'll see meeting materials for tonight's meeting. Click on the link and it'll take you to current applications. You will then see the 67 Chase Road Solar Site Plan Review Application, Plan and Drainage Report. Typically, we deal with the plans. Uh, Jim, I'm going to ask you again if you could potentially do a, a, a screen share so that we don't do that exercise again with Azu. Um, and, and, uh, again, Azu, um, I don't know how many people from the general public are here to discuss this plan, but if, if we could start with, if you have one, you've got to have one somewhere, the overall view of, of, of the, of the site relative to, you know, abutters and, and, and things like that.
So, uh, Jim, thank you so much. Uh, it'll be the same number in sequence as we use on that project. Uh, so that sheet, uh, C three.
Is it showing? Do I have it showing?
Uh, right now, do you have the cover sheet? So it'll be.
Okay, good.
Right.
Is that it?
Uh, that would be correct.
Okay.
Uh, but we need the C three, I think.
That's C three right there.
Okay. All right. So, well, if you go, uh, okay, so that's a zoom in and, and can you try C, uh, two by any chance?
Yep.
That might be just the existing condition though.
There's C two.
Okay. All right. So, um, uh, basically, uh, we, we did it almost like a split screen, uh, to be able to show the, uh, uh, project. So you have, uh, again, the cranberry bog, uh, that red line, that red area is a cranberry bog and the, basically the sheet that you're looking at. The top of the sheet will be on, uh, will be north, uh, what we consider the north. And that'll be up to, uh, Chase Road. So, uh, basically, uh, same deal as the other one. Uh, we're proposing solar in the areas that are, again, further away from button properties. Um, it's, uh, the drainage somewhere will be contained within the development areas because of the good, uh, dri- uh, very well-drained soils that we have at the site. Um, and I think, uh, that's really the extent of it because I know, again, this will go, uh, undergo the, uh, peer review. And if you look at the red area, the dark black areas, those are the, uh, where the, um, transformers will be. And, um, and, uh, I guess I'll entertain any questions or comments. And again, this, this, if you come on Chase Road, yeah, looking at the property, over to your left, you will see existing, uh, panels. Uh, those are, uh, separate. Uh, those will have bought, have bought the one that we are now doing. And so, uh, this, uh, I found a very unique opportunity, uh, for us to keep things totally away from the, uh, wetlands and from the, um, uh, and from the, uh, uh, impacted area. So, um, I think, uh, that it's really what I have for that. And, uh, is there any questions? We'll, uh, try to answer them.
Yeah, Azu.
Yes, sir.
Um, and I can't remember if you did the last one, but I don't know that you officially introduced yourself. We've been talking to you. There's a, no, 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 that's my bad. I need to, I'm the chairman. I'm supposed to make sure that gets done. So I apologize. If you could just, uh, officially introduce yourself and what.
Yes, sir. Sorry. Uh, my name is Azwad Tenero, Mr. Chairman and members of the bo- uh, board and public. I am a registered professional land surveyor and a registered professional engineer in the civil engineering discipline in Massachusetts. And, uh, my firm, I am a principal of ET Engineering Enterprises, Inc. Of, um, Bridgewater, Massachusetts. Uh, we do a lot of work in, in the town of Freetown. And, um, yeah, we are, uh, the firm that prepared, uh, the plans, uh, for TJ A Solar. Uh, TJ A Solar has done a, uh, Uh, TGA Solar has done a uh, a few of these uh, project uh, in town. The last one being the one on, uh, actually on Chase Road, on the uh, north side of Chase Road, further down uh, from the uh, from this one, uh, for the west, west of this site. Uh, so I think well, that's really it, Mr. Chairman, thank you. And I will answer any questions or comments.
Okay. Um, does anybody from the public uh, have any questions on this? Huh. Chris, we have anybody here from the public?
Uh, yeah. Couple people.
Okay. They must not have any questions or comments right now, which is fine. So Azu, I think if you could just speak in general, uh, again, understanding this is going to go and, and be reviewed and, and that's when the, the meat and potatoes of this process really starts happening. Um, but I'm going to assume, given its location, uh, that you're not, you're not anywhere near any homes.
No.
But, but if you would be so kind again, is to show that, um, you know, through some sort of measurements or something, I, 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 I know it, they're quite a bit away, but even if you have to do it through a narrative that shows if they're that far off.
No, we'll be, we will be more than glad, Mr. Chairman, it'll, it'll help assuage any concerns that people have. So I will have no problem uh, uh, taking care of that, Mr. Chairman.
All right, and Azu, the same is going to hold true, you know, Jim brought up the good point earlier relative to the access, egress, lay down areas. Again, understanding, I know that area, having done soil removal permits in that area, conservation permits in that area, I've inspected it, I would encourage others to do the same. Um, so uh, I, I understand that there are, there's accessibility, I, I believe is going to be no issue, but it needs to be demonstrated whether it's, uh, you know, you, you know, show it on the plan that can show turning radiuses and that, and that kind of stuff, right?
Sure, absolutely.
All right.
We're glad, we're happy to do.
Again, anybody from the board have any questions? Not right now?
I, I, yeah, I haven't done.
Okay. Yeah, like I said, not right now, once it starts going through peer review. So we're going to do the same thing with this one Azu right now, uh, because we don't have the full complement of the board. I, I, you know, uh, in fairness to everybody, I want everybody to have an opportunity. I want specifically this should get reviewed at under site plan review. But right now, in the immediacy, we're going to have stormwater management and conformity with the actual solar bylaw, not the site plan review.
Yes, sir.
Um, and oftentimes, again, I'll just speak in generalities, but oftentimes, the amount of peer review is all dependent upon the unique situation. You know, every, what we review on one, we may not review on the other, it can depend on the circumstances. Um, excuse me, a- and uh, I, I think I don't want to, I don't want to belabor the point, but obviously, we're going to be concerned with the stormwater management relative to the cranberry bogs. Uh, so right now, we'll send it out just for that. And then uh, depending again on the narratives relative to uh, uh, relative to the community um, impact, if you will, right? Uh, then we, then we move forward accordingly. But in fairness to the other two uh, longtime board members, uh, that discussion needs to be held when they're here. Um, so if there's no other questions, again, uh, folks in the general public, if it seems like we're not giving this as much attention tonight as, as we should, this is a very long process. We've seen a good number of these, um, we're familiar with uh, the things that need to be looked at and uh, and our peer review is going to do their job. Uh, and again, that's really when, when we get comment back from peer review, uh, that's, that's when really we start getting into the nitty-gritty of these things. But at least this allows the general public to get an opportunity, familiarize themselves with the process and, and, and the project so that we're all starting off at the same place, so. If there's no other questions or comments at this point in time, uh, then I will happily accept a uh, motion to continue the public hearing to June fifteenth, six o'clock at the Freetown Community Room, Freetown Police Station.
So moved.
Second.
Motion remains supported, there's no further discussion on the motion. Hearing none, roll call vote, Jim Freights.
Aye.
Jim Freights, aye, Chris Mello.
Aye.
Chris Mello, aye, Kevin Demaris, aye. Motion is unanimous, uh, so again, those folks, uh, you will not be getting another uh, notification in the mail. Uh, so again, suggest that you follow along through our website. Uh, feel free to contact the office, we will certainly be more than happy to let you know where we, where we are with this process. And uh, again, just point a note, all the peer review that we do, everything that we do, it's, it's open and transparent. We put it on the website, so folks can, can read it if they choose to, uh, to see that we are in fact doing, uh, doing what we're supposed to be doing and doing it in an open way. All right, so Chris, we have any bills to pay? I don't think so, right?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for endorsing us, uh, have a good night.
You're welcome, sir. All right, you have a good night, we'll see you in a couple, I'll, I'll probably see you tomorrow or hear you tomorrow.
Mr. Freitas, uh, thank you for being a lifesaver.
Hi, you're welcome.
Thank you, have a good night.
All right. Jim, I don't, I don't want to break the news to you, but your pay is going to be the same.
I know.
Yeah.
You're not getting anything. I'm doubling yours.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it always is, it's easy to cash odd checks.
Yep, but you learned that in first grade, anything times zero, it's still zero.
Zero is zero, yeah. So, so we don't have any bills payable, uh, did anybody have an opportunity to read the minutes? And if so, I will entertain a motion. If not, I believe we can wait till the fifteenth, right, Chris?
Um, I think the, we should run them, uh, the board should phone them tonight if they've.
Yeah, I, I, I read them, I'll uh.
I just, listen, I just want to make sure typically, you know, don't want to, yes, we typically always read them. So I just, I just, but if people hadn't had an opportunity, I didn't want to jam them up. So if I can get a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
Thank you, can I uh, can I get a second?
Second.
Motion remains supported, if there's no further discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all those in favor, uh, roll call vote, Jim Freights.
Aye.
Jim Freights, aye. Uh, Chris Mello.
Aye.
Chris Mello, aye, Kevin Demaris, aye, motion passes unanimously. Uh, Chris, you got anything else for us tonight, buddy, or are we good?
No, we're all good.
Aye, like that. So uh, that being said, I will entertain a motion uh, to adjourn and I'm hoping that this is the very last time we're doing this via Zoom, so. Thank you, board members, thank you, Chris, and thank you for the gen, to the general public for uh, for, for dealing with this. Uh, can't wait to get back to in person, so uh, I need a motion to adjourn.
Uh, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, motion remains supported, uh, roll call vote, Jim Freights.
Aye.
Jim Freights, aye, Chris Mello.
Aye.
Chris Mello, aye, Kevin Demaris, aye, motion passes unanimously. Uh, Dave Cross never had the chance to join us tonight?
Oh, no, he's here.
Oh, oh, he showed up, oh, you didn't tell me. Hey, Dave, hope all is well, looking forward to seeing you back in person again, my friend.
Oh, boy.
So, all right, guys, everybody be safe, see you in a couple weeks.
Yeah.
See you soon, bye.
Yeah, bye-bye now.